Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, February 10, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Badami?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Birch as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages participation in the public process. To speak on any item, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. Matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard during the verbal communications period. Written communications, we do not have any. Requested continuances, we also do not have any. Subcommittee reports, I'm hoping we have some. So, in addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on various town committees. Are there any reports from commissioners? Commissioner Birch?
Thank you, Chair. Earlier today, the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee met to review a couple items. Item, the first item was 40420 Blossom Hill Road. We reviewed a conceptual plan to demolish two existing office buildings and construct a new two-story fitness center with underground parking. We had a very good conversation with the applicant. They will be coming back to us with some more traffic information, with a little bit more safety mitigation issues as that relates to the schools and children riding on safe routes to schools. Overall, the group felt that it was a good plan. They were maintaining most of the trees on the site. The visual was kept at a minimum, so we probably expect to see them back quite soon. The second item was 30 Roberts Road and 6 Forest Avenue, requesting review of conceptual plans to demolish an existing multifamily structure with single-family and single-family residents, merging those two lots and constructing a four-unit condominium building with below-grade parking. Overall, this was a very positive meeting. The committee felt that what they had presented was a very good design. We liked the underground parking. There were some requests for some modifications on the architectural exterior, and we also expect to see that quite soon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Birch. That does it. We'll move on to verbal communications. However, we do not have any speaker cards. So next on the agenda is our consent calendar, which is item number one, approval of the minutes for January 13, 2016, and January 27 of 2016. Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Erickson?
So I'll move to adopt the consent calendar that includes minutes from the meetings of the commission on January 13 and January 27 of 2016, as was distributed in the packet to the commission by the staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Birch?
I would like to disclose that while I was not at the last meeting, I have reviewed the notes and viewed the video and feel that I can vote on this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
Second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. We do not have any continued public hearings tonight, so we will move on to our new public hearing, which is item number two, 969 Cherrystone Drive Tree Removal Permit Application T-15-215, Appeal of a Decision to Deny a Tree Removal Permit on Properties Owned R-18, APN 529-26-030. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Commissioner Erickson?
So I will be recusing myself since I reside in the properties adjacent to it, but will also be exercising my option as a private citizen to address the commission on this item since I have a personal interest consistent with the applicable statutes.
Thank you for the disclosure, Commissioner Erickson. Commissioner Kane, you also had your hand up?
I visited the property and had incidental contact with the spouse of the appellate.
Thank you. Ms. Armour, can you provide us with a staff report this evening?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. On October 2 of 2015, the town received a tree removal application to remove one redwood tree with a 44-inch trunk diameter from the front yard of 969 Cherrystone Drive. The property owner requests the removal of the tree based on a concern of potential water drainage damage, underground gas pipes, electric damage, and the tree's size and location so close to the existing residences. On November 11 of 2015, the town's arborist conducted an inspection, found the tree to be healthy and the damage minimal, and denied the permit. The property owner appealed the decision on November 11 of 2015. The town consulting arborist, Deborah Ellis, conducted a site visit as part of the appeal process and prepared a report and recommendations. Based on her report, staff recommends the appeal be denied in that the redwood tree appears healthy, the pavement damage minor, and mitigation is possible. Staff recommends the property owner and their neighbor consider following the pavement removal recommendations of the town's consulting arborist. This concludes the staff's presentation. Staff, including members of the Parks and Public Works Department and the consulting arborist, are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Armour. Are there questions of staff at this time? Seen none? Thank you, Ms. Armour. We will now open the public portion of the public hearing and allow the applicant 10 minutes to address the commission. I believe Helen de Oliveira will be speaking on behalf of Mr. Otto?
Yes, thank you.
You will have 10 minutes, by the way.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Helen de Oliveira. I'm the daughter of the applicants, Henry and Marie Sato. We're here tonight to request a permit to remove a large, non-native coastal redwood located 12 feet from my parents' house and nine feet from our neighbor's home. I will provide evidence tonight to support three findings in Section 29.10.0992 of the Town Code. The tree is problematically located directly over utility lines. It has caused damage and will continue to cause significant damage that cannot be controlled without removing the tree. And replacing this tree with native trees would enhance the urban forest while also preventing future damage to our property and that of our neighbor. I'd like to start with the finding in paragraph five. The tree will imminently interfere with utility service where such interference cannot be controlled or remedied. I've spoken to several representatives from PG&E who have stated their company's preference that trees not be on top of a gas line. I was directed to their Community Pipeline Safety Initiative page for the following quote: "Tree roots pose a safety risk because they can damage the protective coating of underground utility pipelines, leading to corrosion and leaks. According to leading national experts on pipeline safety and first responders, putting 'safety first' means replacing trees and other obstacles located too close to underground pipelines." Certified arborist Larry Van Gronnigan stated in his report, Exhibit 5, Page 2, that "A tree of this magnitude will no doubt have roots growing within the location of the utilities, and trees planted too close to a pipeline can cause several potential safety-related problems. Roots follow the path of least resistance and grow easily in the compact soil, in the less compact soils that typically surround a buried pipeline. As roots continue to grow around the pipeline, they can damage the protective coating on the pipe. That's the coating that helps to minimize corrosion on the pipeline. As the trees and roots grow larger, the risk to the pipeline increases." Deborah Ellis, the consulting arborist, admits in her report, Exhibit 6, Page 2, and I quote:[653.44][653.44]"And in my opinion, whenever tree roots are nearby, I suppose that it is always possible that they could damage pipes in some manner, so I will not rule this out as impossible. Therefore, the tree owner and the neighbor at 967 Cherrystone may want to contact PG&E directly and have PG&E assess the situation. This I have done. And based on the professional opinions of three PG&E employees and the two professional arborists, the tree roots do present a potential risk to the gas line. Both arborists also agreed that this potential utility interference cannot be controlled or remedied. Both arborists agree that deterring root growth with a root barrier would not be possible." On Page 3 of Exhibit 5, Mr. Van Gronnigan explains that because our neighbor's home is just nine feet from the tree trunk, the 11 feet required for a root barrier is not available. He adds, "I do not recommend cutting roots and installing a root barrier at a closer distance. The loss of roots would compromise the stability of the tree considerably." On Page 5 of her report, Ms. Ellis agrees with his conclusion, stating that it could destabilize the tree. Moving on to finding number six. "The tree has caused, or may imminently cause, significant damage to existing structures that cannot be controlled or remedied." The challenge with this finding is that the word "significant" is quite subjective. Section 29.10.0955 of the Town Code Definitions states that minor damage to paving or fencing should not be considered when making this determination. So even if one does interpret the existing damage to the landscape paving and the side gate as minor, I would argue that the damage to our neighbor's French drain and garage floor are more significant. In addition, this tree will continue to grow and is likely to cause even more significant damage to both houses in the future. According to the certified arborist's report, "The root system of redwoods is composed of widespread lateral roots and can extend up to 50 feet in each direction." That's in Exhibit 5, Page 2. "The International Association of Certified Home Inspectors states that trees that are too close to buildings can potentially cause structural damage. They listed 'large root systems that extend beneath a house can cause foundation uplift', and 'roots can leach water from the soil beneath foundations, causing the structures to settle and sink unevenly.' Other dangers that they mentioned are that trees that are too close to buildings may be fire hazards, and trees may be used by insects and rodents to gain access to the building." Let's look at the solution the town's consulting arborist proposes in her report, Exhibit 6, Page 4. She says, "In my opinion, it would be best to carefully remove the pavement at 967 between the driveway, garage, and gate fence, and install individual stepping stones on top of the existing grade. Careful exploratory evacuation by hand or with pressurized air to reveal the redwood tree roots could then occur. It may then be possible to carefully hand-grade the soil to facilitate drainage. In any case, however, bare soil absorbs more water than concrete pavement. The remaining area not covered by the stepping stones could then be covered with a few inches of organic mulch, wood chip, wood or bark chips." Carefully removing the pavement and careful exploratory excavation by hand or with pressurized air certainly sounds like a significant rather than a minor repair to me." And then Ms. Ellis states that this may work to resolve the drainage problem, but she offers no certain guarantee. In addition, Ms. Ellis states in her report on Page 2, referring to the downspout, that water encourages root growth. So in fact, her proposal not only fails to solve the existing problem, but it encourages further root growth that will imminently cause additional damage in the future if we do not correct it now. On Page 7 of her report, Ms. Ellis concludes that "The redwood tree was planted very close to both 969 and 967 homes, really too close for a large-growing tree species such as this. Damage caused by the roots of this tree can be expected to increase in the future." Excuse me, pavement damage caused by the roots of this tree can be expected to increase in the future. In summary, both arborists conclude that the tree will continue to grow and its roots are certain to cause additional damage. And, both arborists agree, there is no suitable way to prevent future damage. Potential future damage could be anything from a gas leak or explosion to serious structural damage to the foundation of either home. In conclusion, I would respectfully not want you to make a decision that has the potential to cause a catastrophic event, nor a decision that places continued financial burden on the homeowners for repairs caused by a tree problem that they inherited from the original owners. Alternatively, granting a permit to remove the existing tree and replace it with native species will not only mitigate future damage, it will support the town's objective to enhance the urban forest. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. de Oliveira. Questions? Commissioner Kane?
Good evening. Thank you for coming down. You referenced, the town arborist referenced the number of utilities that could be consulted, water, gas, electric, whatever, and you've provided to us that you talked to...
PG&E, so that's gas and electric.
They provide you with a document?
They provided me with a web address that I can give you where there's a quote to their public utility, what did I say? The, give me one second? The website, and I can give you that address.
I'm not going to be looking that up right now.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, it would have been very helpful if you had a document.
Correct.
What they're all implying when they say "talk to these people," I think, is that they come out and look at it and say, "Oh, that could be a problem." And then they write us a letter to that effect with their engineering seal and all of that looks very official.
Absolutely. So when I asked about that, Mr. Kane, Commissioner Kane, because I got the packet on Friday and started working on this in that amount of time, there was not significant time for them to send someone to the property and get a letter through their legal department that said on our specific property, "This specific tree is an issue." So the three folks that I talked to suggested just getting the quote from the website.
Depending upon where this goes, that might be a good avenue to follow up.
Okay.
That we have a document and an official opinion. I've got more unless you're burning with desire.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Kane.
The other thing I wanted to share with you is, as you go through the arguments in the code for tree removal, I want to share with you that my first reaction to it is, "Well, that knocks off about half the trees in town." The words are not meant to be that loose. The town loves trees. It's a tree-loving town, and they don't want to make it easy to take trees down. So when they talk about structure, endangering a structure, I believe we gave a tree permit approval during 2015, and it was for a big old redwood that was beating up a garage. It was encroaching, and they couldn't get the car in and out of the garage anymore. And I'd offer that to you as an example of threatening a structure as opposed to some cracks. Everybody, not everybody, there are a lot of redwoods in town, and redwoods mean there's a lot of cracks in the ground because that's what they do. I have to find a way to consider taking down this redwood if I did in such a manner that I don't jeopardize all the other redwoods and all the other trees that are doing exactly what your tree is doing, some even more severely, which requests have been denied in the past.
Commissioner Kane, was your question answered?
Did you understand that?
I understand.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you for the very thorough presentation, and had a couple of questions. Relating to the utilities, was there a site visit from PG&E or Comcast or Verizon or one of the other utilities?
There was not a site visit directly related to this particular situation yet. There have been flagging of the pipelines in the past, and my mother's recollection when they had work done on a tree in the backyard and had to call before they dug, that the pipeline runs directly under where this redwood is now.
Okay, thank you. And I have one other question. You mentioned that the solution proposed by the town arborist fails to solve the existing problem. Which problem are you referring to?
So it would correct the appearance of the broken pavement, but it wouldn't necessarily slow down the growth of the tree to prevent any future damage because what it would do is remove several square feet of concrete and replace it with mulch, which would enable more water to reach the roots, you know, at the close distance, thus creating, excuse me, faster growth. She had mentioned that the downspout could be redirected to move water away from the tree because she felt like downspout water, you know, like if that, I guess I'm trying to use the same argument as she is. If she's concerned about the downspout water, then why add more water right around the tree trunk?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you again. I also thought your presentation was very thorough. I appreciate that. Adding on to this discussion about the utilities, we have professional opinions from certified arborists from your, yours, the applicant's perspective, as well as the town's perspective. One of the big concerns, I agree, if the redwood was going to cause damage to the pipes or the electric utilities or the gas or whatever the case may be, that could be a real problem. That being the case, and since there is no written report right now, would you be willing to go down that path if that was the recommendation of the commission, to go get a written opinion from PG&E? Because without that, it's just speculation about what might happen. There's no professional opinion, and you know, and it's a fairly significant decision. So is that something you'd be willing to do?
We can certainly proceed further with PG&E.
Thank you. Further questions? All right, thank you so much. You can have a seat now, and I'll be calling the next speaker up to the podium, and that will be David Schwartz.
Thank you. My name is David Schwartz. I live a few doors down. I live at 976 Cherrystone. Commissioner Erickson and the Otto's are neighbors of mine. I've resided there for 27 and a half years. Yeah, I'm speaking in favor of granting Mr. Otto the permit to take that tree down. It's going under Erickson's garage. I have an oak tree that's out in front of my house. I know what it's done to my sidewalk and my driveway, and I'm just hoping that thing, when it goes, goes across the street to the creek. There's two neighbors that are trying to resolve a potential problem that could be catastrophic in the future. And I think you have to look at the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is that thing ruptures the gas line. And then who's going to be responsible for that? Is PG&E, is the town for not providing a permit and a way to hopefully alleviate that potential problem? That's something you should think about when you're addressing the issue here. Other than that, they've all been good neighbors. I hope you approve this, and thank you for your time.
Don't step away just yet. We might have questions, anyone? Seen none?
Okay.
You can go back and sit down. All right, I'll be calling the third speaker, which is Charles Erickson. This is also our last speaker.
So Charles Erickson, 967 Cherrystone, Los Gatos, the neighbor adjacent to the appellate. So only two really quick kinds of comments from my perspective. We do have a crack in our garage floor, which is approximately 12 feet from the tree. So forth, I'm happy to show you a picture of part of that crack if it wasn't probably possible for the town arborist to see it because, I assume, when she was out there, the garage was closed. We typically keep our garage closed, so I wouldn't fault her for not being able to identify that. Given that one of the two arborists said that if they were going to create a root barrier to prevent, you would prune the roots back to 11 feet, no less than 11 feet, in order to maintain the stability of the tree, since they both have reported that the tree is quite healthy and quite stable, I assume one can conclude that the roots are longer than 11 feet at this point in time, which means they would be underneath the inside of our garage, and it would be reasonable to presume that they were contributing to the crack in our garage door, which is a crack resulted from lifting up, not from exceeding underneath. So we, so from our perspective, there's significant likelihood that both the foundation of our home and the garage floor are in danger as a result of the roots from this tree and as they continue to grow. So one other thing, and I'll watch the clock because I'm going to try to make this uncomplicated. So with respect to the drainage, the drainage, so as you may or may not know, I found out, the town doesn't keep plans after that for homes that are as old as ours, so they're not on file. But in 1990, when we solved the drainage issue, that will now be unsolved because the solution that the town arborist proposed is what was there. What happened, if you do that solution, all of the drainage from our pavement, from our front door, because our courtyard is paved, our driveway is paved, it is all sloped toward the Otto's property. When it rained, water gushed onto the Otto's property when we moved there. We didn't consider that being a good neighbor. So we put in, at our own expense, to correct what I saw at that time on the plans, because the plans existed at that time, a French drain which kept the water from going onto their property and deposited to the full depth of our property. So if we, and it also mitigated against growth into things. So we were trying to solve the problem, which will now be unsolved.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Commissioner Hanson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Erickson. I wondered if you would be willing to have the, one or more of the arborists come out and inspect the damage at your house because this is new evidence that wasn't part of our packet, and it sounds like it's worth reviewing. Is that something you'd be willing to have happen?
Sure. You can, so because my wife is a very nice, neat person, we have a carpet in our garage. So you can see the, you can't see the, you can't see from this picture that the garage floor is lifting up to the crack from what would be the right-hand side, which is the side that's closest to it. I'm happy to have them come do that. I'm happy to have them come do that.
Commissioner Kane?
I would need you to be more than happy. Mr. Erickson, you know it's difficult to take down a tree, and we're going to need documentation that that tree is responsible. You've read the town arborist's report. On page five, she says the cracks in your particular driveway are not necessarily from the redwood tree. So, not being an arbitrist or a geologist, the reasons that she gave might extend to the crack inside your garage as not being a direct result of the tree either. I don't know. I know that you appreciate these reports as much as I do, and right on page five, she says the cracks in your driveway are not necessarily due to that tree. So, it would be not just being amendable to do it, it's going to take documentation that that tree is the source of these existing ills and potential ills to the degree that it qualifies to be destroyed.
Do you want me to respond to that?
My question was, did you read the report?
And would I? I read the report both as an interested personal party and as a planning commissioner.
So, that's what I'm addressing is page five, where she says the cracks in the driveway may not be due to the tree. Does that, to me, extend to the crack in your garage as not being due to the tree? Did you consider that?
The cracks in the driveway are at a significant distance greater from the tree than the crack in our garage, and the cracks in the driveway have been there for a number of years prior to when the crack in our garage was there. So, they've been there for a long time, and they are not cracks. So, the driveway is not lifting up like this. It's just flat. It's cracks. Cracks happen all the time in driveways, from settling, from, there was an earthquake or something of that nature in 1989, I think, that, you know, so they happen all the time. So, this is a more recent crack than any of those cracks that probably is reasonable. I mean, we can't, no one can conclude conclusively that the crack in our garage floor is a result of the tree, or the, actually would not be a result of the tree roots, it would be a result of the displacement of the soil from the tree roots, lifting it up. That's technically what happens, as I understand from an engineer. You couldn't determine that without excavating, tearing everything out and excavating it and looking at it to see whether there's damage.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Erickson? Seen none? Thank you, Mr. Erickson. All right, we will now call the applicant back up to the podium and allow five minutes to add any further comments about the application. Come on up, Mrs. Diallo Bera.
I don't have any other further questions or comments. It seems like the neighbors agree. Mr. Erickson has experienced significant damage. I believe I heard Commissioner Kane that you had initially asked Mr. Erickson a question of would he be willing to have the town arborist revisit and look at his garage for her professional opinion? May we ask Mr. Erickson that question, if that would still be something of interest to you?
Commissioner Kane has a question for you.
What I was saying is that whether it's the garage floor or a second visit by the tree arborist, it's going to require documentation.
I understand that. I just didn't know if that was ever asked as the question.
No, I would do, I would, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but I would do all possible to make it possible for us to take that tree down. And we, I will not do it on argument, because it's argumentative, and I don't know what the fact is, but I know that there is 700 trees watching me, and I need a good reason, documented reason to take that tree down. That's just me.
Do you have any further comments to add?
No further comments, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. All right, we will now close the public testimony of the hearing and ask if any of the commissioners have questions, comments, or maybe entertain a motion. Commissioner Kane?
I have a question for staff. When the case first came up, as I read the documents submitted to us, the tree removal was approved, 11/11/15. And then I, if that's true, then I guess at some point it was, first off, is that accurate?
No, actually, I believe that that was just an administrative error, that check mark on the one, on the.
Well, it's a heck of an error. It says denied, I mean, it says approval with a check on it.
Yeah, no, the, I believe it's the following page is the actual denial. So, this, this application was no, was never approved.
Was it a test? If it was, I hope I passed, because it looks like it was approved, and that got my attention. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Birch?
Just a question of staff. I know that we are being asked to recommend denial or approval of the appeal. However, if the planning commission wanted to see additional documentation before we did that, are we able, are we allowed to continue this, or do we only have the option to deny our appeal?
You definitely have the option to continue it, to a date certain.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
I understand that this matter has come before the planning staff several times before, and I don't know if you know or not, but I am concerned about a tree that close to a house falling on the house, and that would be really significant damage. So, during the course of the three applications where I assume there were arborist's opinion, does the, is there any sense of the trend? Is the tree degrading? Is the condition of the tree getting worse, even though I understand it's still good? But is it in a decline in any way that you can tell by looking at actually, over a period, I guess, of 10 years?
I think I would actually refer that to the town arborist to see if he has any comments on that.
And I'll also just interject, you know, the prior two tree removal permits that were denied did not go through the process of appeal, so they did not have our outside consulting arborist review those, so that would have just been reviewed by Parks and Public Works staff. It's only when an appeal is filed or planning gets involved, and we go through these extra steps to make sure that you have as much information as possible. But with that, I would offer the opportunity and look to Mr. Molden if he's interested in offering an opinion, if he has any additional information in that respect.
Please step up to the podium. Yes, you do. And you have to state your name while you're up there.
Yes, my name's Rob Molden. I'm the arborist for the town. I looked at that tree the first time in 2006, and it basically had the same issues. The mow strip was lifted, there was, I did, I actually saw some of the cracking that was closer to the other resident's home. But at that time, it, there were two trees they asked to come out. One was directly over the PG&E lines, and we gave them a permit to remove that tree because I had concerns about that at that time. I recommended that the tree we're talking about tonight be trimmed, and they had someone come in and did a bang-up job on it, and it's been great since then. And so, I went back out when the applicant applied, and the tree looks basically the same as it did 10 years ago. I don't see a whole lot of difference. It's mostly mow strip that you look, but now, once again, I don't do the, when I go out, I do a visual inspection. I don't dig, I don't, you know, pull up pavement, or, you know, look and see what roots are doing. And I think that's, I agree with Deborah on that. I think it needs to be looked at and see if that's in fact what's causing the problem with the garage, the drainage. So, if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer.
Yes, Commissioner Hudes has a question for you.
Yeah, I'm curious whether we've kept records, and you know whether there are arborist reports that preceded this latest application.
To my knowledge, there were not. I dealt with Mr. Otto and his wife in 2006, and, you know, I told him how I felt about it at that time, and I'm guessing they agreed with me, because they had it trimmed, and it's, it looks nice.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Kane?
The deal is, it's just going to get bigger. And I don't know that we have a mathematical calculation, algorithm, oh, now we can cut it, you know, and it's, those redwoods are just going to get bigger, and they're all over the place, which is what I said earlier, there's 700 redwoods watching me on this So tactically, we have a problem with Mr. and Mrs. Otto. Strategically, the town has a problem of trees that, god darn it, just keep on growing. At what point, is there a point when we say, yeah, now it's too big, it's got to go? They've tried before to have it removed, they've been denied, denied, and they're trying again, and it's bigger than it was 10 years ago, and it's going to be bigger in 10 more years. What, what's the sense of this if sooner or later that tree's going to get cut?
Well, I think the sense of it is that when it meets criteria, and I think that if PG&E, if there's inspections done, the inspections that are being recommended, then I think we have a better idea of whether or not this tree is still viable for this site or not. But with, you know, sands having all that, I think we're, we need to see that. I think that's, I mean, maybe that tree can stay. I mean, once we do all this, once we take, have PG&E look at it, look at what's going on under that hardscape, you know, I think we're going to have a better idea whether that tree can stay or not.
Commissioner Hudes had his hand up next.
I believe the denial was in November of 2015, and at that time, was there information conveyed to the appellant that, that Pete, that there was no information directly that the town had from PG&E? So, was it ever communicated to the appellant that it might be a good idea to have them come out and look at it, or did that information just reach them on Friday?
I think that that information just reached them, yes. I didn't see that as, you know, once again, I'm not looking underground. I, you know, I'm looking at what I can visually see.
And I would just interject, and we can check with Ms. Armour, but I believe the arborist report from Debbie Ellis, the consulting arborist, was forwarded to the property owner prior to Friday. Her daughter, probably, the first time she saw it was Friday when she looked at the packet, but I'm not sure if Ms. Armour has an actual date, but she, if she doesn't, then I just offer that for information.
Commissioner Hanson?
So, thank you for your comments. I wanted to ask about this PG&E situation. That seems to be the biggest question involved in terms of not having, you know, any professional opinion. Have you, in your experience, had PG&E come and out and give a written confirmation of where, you know, what their risks were to a tree? Have they, are they willing to do that, and have you seen them doing that?
I haven't had that experience. Now, you know, with the explosions that they had in, was San Mateo, this has become more of a concern, obviously, but we're talking about major gas lines, not the gas lines to a home. And so, I don't know what their program is with home gas lines, so I can't really comment on it. I have not seen, they don't, we have never had any tree removal permits that come to me that say this, we want this out because it's moving our gas lines.
And so, you're saying you've never worked on a tree removal permit where PG&E's come in as a consultant to evaluate the situation?
With their overheads, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Kane?
I want your opinion on something. Once or twice tonight, the word catastrophic has been used, and it's got my stomach churning. There's lots of tall trees in this town, and lots of those trees can fall down, and lots of it can be catastrophic, and I'd want to remove the sense of, you know, we're ignoring an imminent threat. That would be catastrophic. So, in your opinion, as you visually inspected the tree, is it a healthy tree? Does it look like it's coming down?
Oh, absolutely, it's healthy, and it's, I don't see any surface cracks or anything that would say this tree's unstable. I don't think that's the question here. The tree's healthy, and it's stable.
So, you see no immediate evidence of a potential catastrophic event?
Not when you're, if you're talking about blow over, falling over, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further questions.
All right.
All right, further discussion amongst the commissioners. I will add some comments. Exhibit five and exhibit six provide two independent arborist reports that support two findings of concern, and that mitigation measures to cut the roots and install root barriers will compromise the stability of the tree. And due to the poor location of the tree, the potential to interfere with utility services and cause further damage is very likely. And I'm looking at one of the findings, and it says the removal of the tree or replacement with a more appropriate tree species will enhance the town's urban forest. This is a non-native tree. It's a poor choice of a tree for the neighborhood. Those are my comments. Commissioner Birch?
So, I agree that the placement of the tree is not ideal, and with probably some additional backup, just so in, you know, we have to look at these each on an individual case-by-case basis, right? And our goal here is not to set a precedence that, as Commissioner Kane had brought up, all trees that get to be X big, they can go down. So, I would, I would ask if perhaps we could even just continue this and ask, if it's not PG&E, there's other underground utility survey companies, one of them is called USA, that will come out and survey sites and tell you exactly where your utilities are. And if there is a gas line going underneath the tree, I think it's quite simple for us to make a decision. I think with that backup, I would feel very comfortable saying this. I think without it, you know, we're looking at things that say potential danger, or could be, and it makes me a little less willing to just say, yes, let's just do this. So, that would be my recommendation, that perhaps we just ask for that paperwork, continue to a date certain, but I would be curious how my other commissioners felt.
Would you like to put that into a motion?
If nobody has any problem, then I will move to continue. Tree removal permit application, T-15-215, 969 Cherrystone Drive, to a date certain, requesting that the applicant please provide us, and I'm not going to say just PG&E, because again, there are other underground utilities companies that may be more responsive than PG&E, but just provide us with a report that does give us information on the underground utilities that are going underneath that tree as backup for us in making a decision, if in fact that's the case, for tree removal. Date certain-wise, I would look to staff to assist in setting the date.
I don't know that we want to push it out very far, but even if we do, and they're still gathering that information, we can always continue it again to a date certain. So, I'd probably look at March 9th.
Okay. I would add that to my motion and see if anyone had any questions or concerns.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? Commissioner Kane, you had your hand up? Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are not, as it was, it was a continued item.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have a report from the Director of Community Development? And that would be Mr. Paulson. Do you have a report for us?
I have a couple of brief things. So, first, council met last week and discussed a couple of items that the planning commission had considered, formula retail, and with that item, they continued it, actually returned it back to the policy committee for some additional work, for the hillside development standards and guidelines. They had a lot of conversation regarding the visibility analysis and that aspect, and continued that back, referred that back to staff for some additional work, but they approved the recommendation for averaging the colors for LRV, and so that was adopted. A couple of other items of note, there is a project at 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard, known as Il Vicinato. It's 11 homes. The council in December granted an exception to the typical story poll protocol. The council in December granted an exception to the typical story poll protocol, so they will be having the story polls up for 10 days, starting, I think they're actually up today, we're waiting for certification, and so those will run through the 20th, and they'll begin to be torn down on the 21st. We'll also get photo documentation of those polls, so as they come forward to the planning commission, which it's tentatively scheduled for on February 24th, and then subsequently the council pending the planning commission's action on a recommendation for the plan development. The second item, we wanted to let folks know, and the audience and planning commissioners as well, we will be having an open house for North 40, so the developers are getting close to finalizing a model for the Phase 1 development of the North 40. So we'll have a model and some stations set up to allow community members to ask questions of the development team and staff, and that will be February 20, Tuesday, February 23rd, and I believe it begins at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
And that will, yes, that will be in the lobby council chamber combo. Thank you.
Commissioner Kane?
Mr. Paulson, the story polls coming down on 220, presuming that I'm going to be looking at that case possibly, it would help, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it would help if I knew what I was looking for or at. So is there a draft of the project that I could look at when I look at the story polls and try to get a picture of what's going on, as opposed to just going out there and looking at them before 220?
Sure, thank you for the question. So actually, on the town's website, we have what's called the Pending Project website, and so we have, we are working to make sure that we get electronic versions of plans, and so you click on the L, because it's alphabetical, and that will get you to Los Gatos Boulevard. You'll look for the 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard project, and there should be a button that says View Plans. If you're unable to find that, let me know, and I will make sure that it's available somewhere else on the website.
Thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
So a couple of follow-up questions about that particular project to Mr. Paulson. So in the earlier report which was distributed to us...
The environmental document?
Right.
Yeah.
So it suggested that it would be agendaized for the commission on February 24th, is that still the case?
That still is the case, yeah.
May I ask an additional question, and if it's not, if it's not appropriate to ask the question at this point in time, but, so if I, in reading that, so they're proposing to do a plan development, they're, as opposed, and the underlying zoning is commercial highway, I believe, so, and they're, they're, they're proposing to do residential there? Correct?
Those are correct statements. It's similar to the project across the street.
I understand, I understand.
It has the same designations, yes.
So did the staff have interactions with them about coming in for a zoning change so that it would be consistent with the general plan and the general plan designation and the zoning designation that has been discussed by the PD's task force?
They're aware of the discussions the Plan Development Study Committee has had, but since those are not codified currently or modified, then they're using the current version of the general plan and zoning designation, but they have been aware of those conversations since the beginning. I will have to check with staff, frankly, to see what, if there have been any explicit conversations related to that topic.
Yeah, it was just a curiosity, if they had, just a curiosity, where they had chosen to go the path that they, which is perfectly their legitimate right to do at this point in time, I understand, just a curiosity question.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I also had a question on the same project. So on the 24th, will be, we be hearing the environmental document, or is this going to be a, an application for approval of the plan development?
On the 24th, you'll be hearing all of the above. So you'll be asked to, as with any plan development, to make a recommendation on the plan development application, so that would be a recommendation to the town council, and then you can technically certify or move forward with the PD application, the environmental document. We've had cases where the planning commission has certified the document, and we've had other cases where they've moved it up with the actual application to council.
And there won't be a full EIR, because that was a sort of a summary document?
So EIR is not required, so what EIR is required, is strictly required when there are significant unavoidable impacts that cannot be mitigated. We have had a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, we've had some applicants come forward where applications could have been handled environmentally with a mitigated NCC, but they have chosen to do an environmental impact report. This applicant has not chosen to do that.
Okay. Do any members of the commission have an issue to bring to the attention of the commission other than what we've just discussed? Seen none, this meeting's adjourned.